All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6 o'clock, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Please bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the blessings of yesterday, today, and the promise of tomorrow. Let us not waste it and be grateful always. Amen.
Amen.
We stand to face our flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number five will be public comment. There was a sign-up sheet to the left. If you missed it, don't worry. You'll have three minutes to approach the podium and address the board with any comments, complaints, or concerns. At the end of the three minutes, I'll thank you. You don't have to stop mid-sentence, but please finish your thought and be respectful to the other speakers. And if you did miss the sign-up sheet, no worries. At the end of it, I'll ask for a hand. If you've got something to say, then more than welcome. That will move forward.
Ross Hardeman.
Excuse me. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, commissioners.
I think it's kind of funny. It takes a second. If you hold it up really close there, that'll help everybody listening at home.
Okay, how about now?
That's perfect.
All right, good evening again, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Ross Hardeman. I represent the Brownlow family, including Commissioner Brownlow in his individual capacity. The Brownlows retained me in the late summers as they became apprehensive over the investigation into their property. Issues regarding the reserved natural area on their construction lot were brought to their attention in the summer, and they began working with town staff to fix those issues, even though they suspected the town's calculations and conclusions may be erroneous. But when enforcement efforts appeared to escalate without their involvement or notification, they asked for guidance through this process. At that point, we worked with the town attorney on a proposed settlement. My firm represents three counties and numerous towns, and in that experience, town staff routinely works with citizens to remediate any ordinance issues, and often does so informally as long as the citizen is a willing partner. In my opinion, the town attorney represented the town well, balancing the sensitivity of not treating an elected official differently than anyone else while keeping ordinance compliance as the paramount concern. We arrived at what we felt was a good resolution to all involved, and that settlement boiled down to an agreement to comply with the ordinances by the Brownlows as originally interpreted by the town, and a payment equaling the maximum the attorney felt the town could find the Brownlows. At the Halloween special meeting, it became clear this board would not consider the proposed settlement, and there has now been continued discussion of enforcement via a notice of violations. The discussions drug out long enough that it will soon cause serious consequences to my clients. This may be the last board meeting between the Brownlows seeking a CO. Uncertainty is dangling over their heads. Their son, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren will soon attempt to move into their new home, and we need to know if they'll be allowed to do so, or if ordinance enforcement efforts will prevent the prompt issuance of a CO, forcing the family to pay for two homes in the meantime while not being able to live in one. We believe a notice of violations at this point would be arbitrary and capricious considering the town's enforcement patterns. A notice of violations must make clear how the property owner should comply. We've been asking those questions, but without any clear answers, the Brownlows tried to find their own, obtaining a sealed survey and an engineer's opinion that they are in compliance with the 35% natural area requirement. So it's only fair that the town be able to show exactly what areas, what dimensions should be revegetated if it disagrees, and with evidence of a similar quality. If the town wants to penalize for tree cutting, it should be able to say which trees were cut, where, and what kind, and prove that no exemptions under the ordinance applied. We've been trying to work this out, and if my clients need to do anything, please tell us what it is. Give us the chance to compare information and hash it out together. The Brownlows do not want the town to expend resources on board of adjustment hearings, subsequent appeals, just because there was a delay while deciding whether to take the symbolic step of sending a notice of violations. Not sending a notice does not provide special treatment, but the length, uncertainty, and public nature of this situation is the opposite of that for the Brownlows. It does not have to be this way. I know that despite any differences, the people in this room love this town and all have big things to accomplish in 2025. So what better way to end this year than to put this matter to rest? Look forward to hearing from the town and its staff and achieving finality. Thank you all, and wish you all and your families Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Did we miss anyone, or did anyone miss the sign-up sheet? I see a hand. Yes, ma'am. Oh, hey, Joy.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank the Community Watch Group for inviting my husband and I to the recent Christmas gathering. It was a lovely evening, and this is a group that we are so very thankful for, and I look forward to volunteering. Second, I am following up where I left off from the last meeting regarding the home I am constructing. I need to know specifically what I need to do or provide in order to be able to get a CO for my son's family, which includes a three-month-old and a five-year-old, so that we can receive permission to use their housing. Our property has been under this investigation since July, which has been one of the most stressful events in my life. I have even had to get a check on my heart this week at the hospital due to the extreme stress. This is my new reality. Going after our home seems like a hobby to some of you, but for me, it is my life and it is my parents' life. The site continues to have people coming by constantly, including this weekend and today, and not just to wave or say hello. This has started ever since local Facebook groups and some of you in the town have put our address out there on social media to 56,000 people. Since the last meeting, I have received no update on my property, which has an ASBIL survey with my 35% natural area, and in addition to that, I have planted additional numerous native plants and trees throughout the site. Also, in the meantime, since the last meeting, other properties that have little to no vegetation and appear to be cut corner to corner have received COs no problem. If you are truly concerned about the natural areas, my property is certainly not what you need to be doing investigations on. It's many others. I am in compliance. What you might want to look at is oceanfront homes that had state-protected primary dunes, which is our protection against hurricane storm surge, leveled and destroyed to install concrete pools, which is against town and state regulations. You could also focus on lots that are actually cut corner to corner. I have only gone back 24 months and have found lots of them, a huge percentage, some where the homes are already built, some with recent COs, and some which are currently under construction. One site plan showed a natural area that is now a hardscape pool deck. Another site plan claimed the public waters of Bug Sound is the natural area. My property, however, has well over 35% natural area, and I have spent a five-figure sum of money to build retaining walls to preserve my natural area. Who you are selectively targeting is a local, hard-working family, all of which have worked jobs since we were about 14 years old, including but not limited to being a trash man, being a lifeguard, working on a dairy farm, working in tobacco. We are working people. We're still a working family. This home is not a spec house or an oceanfront hotel-type McMansion with a concrete pool. It is a simple, two-story family home, a primary residence, with no room for a pool or patio because we have followed the rules and have preserved over 35% natural area. It is getting harder and harder for working families to even afford to live here, and then when we try to build a primary residence for our son's family, we get put through the wringer. In the meantime, many folks seem to have, and I'm not going to mention names and addresses because I'm not going to embarrass people, it's not my job, but other folks seem to have absolutely no rules to follow. Again, if you take the new construction list, which I've got 20 copies of new construction the past two years, I got it from the county, it's public record, you can take the new construction list and drive around, and you can see for yourself if that's what you would like to do. I would encourage you to do so. Anyway, I had a little more, but I'm going to stop right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Did we miss anyone else? All right, thank you all. Item number six, excuse me, is the "We Heard You" follow-ups to prior public comment section. Madam Clerk, do we have the printed copies of the follow-ups by the, thank you for not messing that up this time, just kidding. Follow-ups from the prior meeting, there's printed copies to the town staff and elected official, and/or elected official follow-ups right beside the public comment sign-up sheet there. So we do hear you, we do act, we do respond, there's printed copies. If you didn't get one on the way in, you can get one on the way out. Item number seven would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
They're moved.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Item number eight would be, I don't think we have any proclamations, so we'll go public announcements.
Welcome to this month's public announcements. Join us for community conversations on December 11th at the Trading Post from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. Don't miss the Holiday Arts and Crafts Fair, happening December 14th at the Islander Hotel from 11 to 5 PM. The next planning board meeting is December 16th at 6 PM. Join the Emerald Isle Police Department for police educating the public on December 17th from 10 to 11 AM. Join your neighbors and the Emerald Isle Police Officers for coffee and conversation on December 19th from 9 to 10 AM. There will be a blood drive on December 20th. This blood drive will be held from 1 to 5:30 PM at the Islander Hotel. The town's administrative offices will be closed December 24th, 25th, 26th, and January 1st. The community center will close at 12:30 PM on December 24th and will reopen on December 26th and also closed on January 1st. The police department lobby will close at 4 PM on December 24th and will be closed on Christmas Day. The next neighborhood watch meeting is on January 7th, 2025, at 4 PM. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on January 14th, starting at 6 PM.
All right, thank you very much for that. Excuse me, 8B, Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley has an employee recognition. Hey, Candace.
Good evening and thank you. Unfortunately, Bob was not able to be with us this evening. He's with his daughter in Wilmington, spending some much-deserved time together after Thanksgiving holiday. So we just wanted to recognize Bob for his more than 11 years of service with the town of Emerald Isle. He's a retired veteran in our U.S. military, and he has been a huge asset to the Parks and Recreation Department. As Alicia Well knows, he started over 11 years ago in paid parking in the Western Beach Access, enduring those hot summer days, collecting cash as people came in and paid, and now he's that smiling face that you see at the community center when you come in and swipe in to workout or come in for an activity. So he's going to work through January for a little while with us, but he is much deserving of this retirement. I won't give you his age, but it's definitely a second retirement, and we very much appreciate Bob.
It's a third one.
We've only got Bob through January.
Technically, third.
Yeah, he retired from Onslow Memorial.
Mm-hmm, correct.
We've only got Bob through January now?
That's it.
Well.
Yes, we will miss Bob.
Congratulations, Bob. Wherever you are in Wilmington, enjoying time with your family, thank you so much. Well deserved. All right, 8C, Police Chief Michael Panzarella with Sergeant Biscup. Something to say about Sergeant Biscup?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and recognize two officers of the Emerald Isle Police Department. The first one I'd like to recognize is Master Sergeant Tyler Biscup. Tyler just completed the North Carolina Justice Academy Leadership Institute. That was 120 hours on leadership training, which spilled over into him receiving his leadership certificate, which is a total of 400 hours. And that leadership certificate, again, through the North Carolina Justice Academy, is to enhance leadership skills that will guide not only the individual, but their agencies and community towards a better future. I think it's important for you also to know that the North Carolina Justice Academy offers six specialized certificates. Master Sergeant Biscup holds four of those. So each of those certificates require around 400 hours per certificate, so that's a lot of training hours, and we are certainly thankful for Master Sergeant Biscup. Unfortunately, he could not be with us tonight because he is traveling back from the Justice Academy from another training class. The second officer I would like to recognize is a promotion officer, Jedrick Zaponiac. Jedrick is being promoted from police officer to police officer one. In order for him to do that, he must complete 180 hours of training. There are 124 hours of established electives through our POCAP, Police Officer Career Advancement Program, with another 28 hours in patrol and traffic electives, and another 28 hours in officer choice electives. Officer Zaponiac also could not be with us tonight as he was attending a Christmas program for his daughter. So congratulations to both Master Sergeant Tyler Biscup and Jedrick Zaponiac.
Congratulations to both of you, gentlemen, and congratulations, chief, for leading the team that you do. Does not go unnoticed, it's a thankless job, people away from their homes and families every night, and in the middle of it getting the extra education they need to further their careers. Thank you all for what you do. All right, let's see here. The brief summary, according to my green sheet, and I won't word it to death because I'm not a wordsmith, I'm a rambler, and I don't want to run out of breath and pass out in front of everyone, but a very high honor has been bestowed upon us, or bestowed upon our town manager. Excuse me. It's a really, really big deal. If you don't know how big of a deal it is, I wish you would look it up and see what goes into such an appointment and the work that goes into even being considered for such an appointment. But our esteemed town manager, Matt Zap, has been appointed by our Governor Roy Cooper to the North Carolina Water Treatment Facility Operator Certification Board. Governor Cooper thanked Mr. Zap for his willingness to serve the people of North Carolina and recognized his leadership and commitment to help strengthen and improve the quality of life for our North Carolina communities. Matt Zap also received a congratulatory letter from Attorney General Josh Stein for his appointment. I'd like to personally invite you all to thank Matt for his continued dedication to not only our Emerald Isle community, but to its communities all across the state. And from the governor's office, the state of North Carolina, Roy Governor Cooper, placing special trust and confidence in your integrity and knowledge, and by virtue of the authority vested in me by law, I hereby appoint Matthew R. Zap, member of the North Carolina Water Treatment Facility Operator Certification Board, and hereby confer upon you all the rights, privileges, and powers useful and necessary to discharge your duties faithfully and in a proper manner with your appointment. Hereby sign my name and affix the great seal of the state of the North Carolina Capitol in Raleigh this day, October 9th, 2024, Governor Roy Cooper. Well earned, well deserved, and congratulations, sir. So I'll frame it for you and bring it back. All right, moving forward, item nine will be our consent agenda. There was FEMA public assistance and some revisions to the November 12th meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
All right, Commissioner Brownlow with the motion to adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, and our esteemed Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley back up at the podium. We have some really great news.
And thank you. As most of you know, this is my most favorite presentation of the entire year, and this one is no exception, as this is our 10th anniversary for the Emerald Isle Marathon, Half Marathon, and 5K. And we have worked tirelessly for the last 10 years to make this event as successful as it is, but I absolutely did not do this alone. I have a couple of committee members who were able to make it today, so Emily and Patrick, if you would join me, stand with me. They have been with me since the very first year to make this race happen. It takes about 10 of us organizing for a full 12 months, and so I'm super appreciative. Friends that are more like family, with the exception of my husband, obviously, so he gets extra credit because he has to listen to me at night, too. But I also couldn't do it without the town staff, and that's been since the very beginning. Every single department has a huge part in this race. My Parks Department, Public Works, Fire, Police, everyone, Laura, and Finance, and I just want to say how much I sincerely appreciate you all and the support to make this happen over the last 10 years. So this year's race, we had 1,200 registered, and we had 36 states represented and three countries, including a participant from Sweden and one from Germany. So it just goes to show Emerald Isle is a growing, beautiful place, and people want to travel from that far just to run our race. And I can tell you that those two participants, one was in the marathon and one was in the half marathon. So they're traveling great distances and not for the longest race necessarily. Over the last 10 years, we have raised, as of tonight, $400,000 that have been donated to the Emerald Isle Bike and Pedestrian Path and local health-related charities. So that's a huge undertaking, and it's a pleasure to give back to our community in that way, and so that's why this is absolutely my most favorite part. And so without further ado, for this year, I will be accepting the check on behalf of the Bike and Pedestrian Path, and after the board approved some changes a few months ago, we are splitting the Bike and Pedestrian Fund and another check with Western North Carolina, so we are happy to donate $7,500 to the Bike and Pedestrian Path. And then we will be sending a check tomorrow, actually, to the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina's Emergency and Disaster Response Fund for $7,500. It's a great honor. Now you're going to thank me. So our local health-related charity this year, we chose the Broad Street Clinic, and so I have asked Ms. Lou, if she could join me, please, Lou Johnson, and we are super excited for this one. If you guys will join me in the center, this one is for $15,000 to help people in Carter County receive health care.
Wow. Candace, thank you, everyone involved. It's an extreme undertaking, and if you haven't been involved in something like that, you truly don't know what it takes from a work perspective, but from a heart and dedication perspective, and I value and respect you, your efforts, and everyone behind you. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 11, we have some continued discussion regarding our UDO update, so I will invite Kirby Smith and team up to the podium to proceed from here. The floor is yours, sir.
This on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you folks are in for a treat. This is my first PowerPoint presentation of my life. I've managed to live a long, healthy life without having to do one of these. I had to enlist Mark Salata to put the presentation for me together. I've handed out to you a worksheet that I did to put this presentation. You can see in there my notes, it started out at 47 pages. I whittled it down to 20, and I gave it to Mark, and he made it the presentation you're going to see tonight. In the review that I handed you, you can see my notes, so if you have any questions from that, please do not hesitate to ask as we go along. All right, our first slide, thank you, Mark. What were we asked to do with the UDO? I was asked to identify when the town can impose fines for violating the UDO and to whom the fines may be levied against. We were asked to identify the cost the town can legally fine a property owner or responsible person for violations, and identify conflicts, ambiguities, points of confusion as they pertain to the Emerald Isle UDO. All right, let's go to the first issue. Must all fines be levied upon the property owner? Well, the short answer is, it depends. The UDO defines a responsible person. Well, actually, let me go back for a second. In reading the UDO, the ordinances refer to owners, tenants, developers, agents, permities, violators, and responsible persons. Responsible persons are defined in the UDO as the owner of each property located within the town. The owner is the person vested with the fee ownership. That's a legal term, basically, meaning the person who owns the property. Let's go to the next slide. While the UDO does not require owners to be fined, we would, excuse me, we would recommend that the town consider fining the owners in the UDO when there are violations. Excuse me. The owner should be the person we would recommend who is the person who pays the taxes as identified by the tax office. The reason we would recommend the owners is because the main thrust of the UDO when there are violations is a fine, and if the fine is not paid, it can become a lien on the person's property. If the lien is not paid, the town can ultimately foreclose on the property to recover the money. That's the main thrust of the UDO, and that's why we would recommend that owners be the person responsible for paying the fines, because ultimately, they will be the one to bear the brunt of the cost, because the owners are responsible for making sure the fines will be paid. In contrast, tenants, contractors don't have the same interest. Next slide, please, Mark. Number two, can a fine be levied upon a contractor for violating the UDO? Well, sometimes. If it's flood damage prevention regulations, the floodplain administrator must notify the owner or occupant of the building of the violation. So here, there would be an order to take corrective action, and that would apply solely to the property owner. In contrast, under storm order management, a notice of violation would be levied against any person who any person who violates the stormwater management regulations. And when you look at dunes vegetation and protection regulations, excuse me, it doesn't really say who is responsible, but just reading between the lines and the context, we would read that to be the property owner's responsible to guarantee the protection of all identified dune systems and not allow the natural topography of the land to be altered beyond that which is authorized. So, issue number two, the answer, as I said at the beginning, who's responsible? It depends. Section 9.4 of the UDO, which is basically enforcement, generalized enforcement, speaks only of offenders. When you're talking about flood damage prevention, you may not fine a contractor. If you're talking about stormwater management, you may fine a contractor. And while the dunes and vegetation regulations is ambiguous, it implies that the property owner would be the person to be fined. And we note here, fines under the dunes and vegetation regulations are $1,000. That's a set fine. And there are some fines that are not set. We'll get to those in a minute. Issue number three, can or should a fine be levied if damage occurs on a neighboring property? There's been some discussion about this. We, being my firm, we read the UDO as saying, no. The thrust of the UDO is basically development, redevelopment of land in Emerald Isle. It deals with people modifying, changing their property, and how to go about doing that. The penalties apply to the property. And so, we read that as to say, no, the UDO does not apply to, you know, neighboring properties. Now, does that mean nothing can be done? And the answer to that is, no. Go to the next slide, please. Issue number three, where it says recommendation, probably a better title for this page would be alternatives. If a person's property is damaged by somebody else, no matter how, there are civil and criminal penalties available. If a person's trees, vegetation is damaged by another person, you are always free to file a civil action against that person to recover the cost of what you lost. There's also criminal charges as well that can be brought. The criminal charges under North Carolina Dental Statute 14-27, which is injury to real property, make it a crime to intentionally and willfully damage the property of another. If the damage is less than $1,000, it is a Class 1 misdemeanor. If it is more than $1,000, it is a Class I felony. Now, this is a criminal statute, so it does require the actions to be intentional and willful. However, there's another statute, more directly on point, which is 14-128, which is injury to trees, crops, lands. And this directly says, a person who basically damages the trees, crops, vegetables, plants of another person shall be guilty of a Class 1 misdemeanor. So, there are civil and criminal remedies to damaging someone else's property, but I do not believe it's covered by the UDO. Okay, number four. Under the UDO, what may the town find violators? Okay. As I said a few minutes ago, Rule 9.4 of the UDO is basically general principles of enforcement. Section 9.5 are more specific rules of enforcement. If you look, Mark, you may need to look this up for me, what section it is. The town is required, once it receives notice of a violation, to investigate it. The town can do an initial notice of violation. They can do a final notice of violation. The UDO really puts a thrust, and I'm going off the PowerPoint presentation here, I hope you apologize, on having people come into compliance. And, Mark, if we could skip ahead to the civil penalties chart. You see right here, under the civil penalties, you know, once you receive a notice of violation, the person's supposed to have 15 days to bring it into compliance. And then, there's a graduated scale of fines that follow afterwards. Now, these are general. It doesn't apply to situations where the UDO is more specific. We can go back, Mark. So, as you can see, the UDO puts a real thrust in all these situations, whether it's stormwater management, floodplain, to say, when there's a notice of violation, the first thing that must be done is the person must come into compliance. If the person doesn't come into compliance after seven days, I'm sorry, after 15 days, then they can be cited, and they can receive a fine. The fine's not paid in 15 days, I'm sorry, seven days, excuse me, then they can be cited again. There's a little ambiguity here, I'll address that in a second. These fines, however, do not accumulate. The UDO does not allow for the daily accumulation of fines. As a general rule, it does in some places, but as a general rule, it doesn't allow for the daily accumulation of fines. Next slide, please, Mark. It is, as I said, the UDO is ambiguous as to the timeline for assessing fines. Let's go to the timeline, Mark. Thank you. If you remember that chart I showed you just a moment ago, you know, on the first day, you have a violation notice is given. The person has 15 days to comply. On the 16th day, if the person's or property is not in compliance, a notice can be issued. The UDO, in this case, says a citation with a $50 fine, and the person has seven days to pay the fine and secure compliance. I will tell you, there was discussion in our office, when does the second violation occur? Does it occur after seven days if the fine isn't paid, or did the person have another 15 days to bring the property into compliance? Mark came up with this timeline. This is how we interpret the timeline. But essentially, after 15 days, you can bring a second citation. If it's not paid, the property's not brought into compliance, then you can bring a third citation. The fines accumulate to $200. And then, we would interpret the UDO to say every 15, seven to 15 days, if the person doesn't bring into compliance, then, you know, the fine, you can keep citing and fining them. One question you might ask is, do we just have to cite them and fine them? Can we take any other action? And the answer to that is yes. Before I get there, though, I want to go back. Next slide, Mark. We've been talking about civil penalties. It's important to note that the town's ordinances can be criminally enforced as well. A crime is something that a person does intentionally and willfully. So, if someone is intentionally violating the UDO, it is a crime punishable in our state courts. It is a Class 3 misdemeanor, punishable by up to $500, although I think in places, the UDO says its maximum fine's $50. So, what are the town's remedies? Suppose the town has someone who says, I'm just not going to bring my property into compliance. The town has choices, Mark. First, we've talked about the notice of violation. The town can issue a notice of violation. We can get into the details of what the notice must include, but it's really not that important here. Basically, you just have to tell, we would say, the property owner, these are the violation, this is the violation, this is how you bring your property into compliance, these are the consequences if you do not bring your property into compliance, and your right to appeal. I should note, all appeals in these cases would go to the town's Board of Adjustment. The UDO merges the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment into one board. The board actually serves as the town's judiciary. An interesting note, you'll see that in the packet, in my notes I gave you, the Board of Adjustment has subpoena power. They have quasi-judicial power. And so, and whoever cites the notice of violation is responsible for appearing before the board to essentially prosecute the case and present the evidence to the Board of Adjustment for why the violation should be upheld. But as we've discussed, or as I mentioned, I should say, notice of violations might not always work. So, what else can the town do? The town can issue a stop work order. This assumes that there's some type of construction or activity going on that can be stopped. This underscores why I think the UDO is primarily designed for development and redevelopment of property, but a stop work order can be issued. There's nothing that says the stop work order cannot be issued at the same time a notice of violation is issued. They can go out together. It essentially says, stop working. Okay? You cannot work until this violation's corrected. A good example of that, I hate to reference New Bern, but that's what I know in this case. There are some old buildings in New Bern. Someone started painting one of the red brick buildings white, and the city was very quick to come down and say, stop, this is, you don't have the permission to do this, and here's a stop work order. Now, you might be saying, well, if a person's going to ignore a stop work, ignore a notice of violation, is he going to ignore a stop work order? He certainly could, but it's a crime to violate a stop work order. And if you don't, then you proceed to the next step, which would be judicial remedies. Okay. The first thing is, in judicial remedies, you would seek an injunction. An injunction is a court order that makes someone stop doing what they're doing during the pendency of a case. Okay? You would actually have to bring a lawsuit, ask the court to say, there's harm being done, and we need to stop it now. And then, the judge presumably would grant that, and while the case is pending, the person would have to stop work, and then the town would have to show to the court's satisfaction that the work being done is in violation of the town's ordinances. The town can also get an order of abatement. That would be an order from the court to basically return the property to its original state. You know, you violated the town ordinance in however manner, go put it back the way it was. Occasionally, you might find someone who's especially hard-headed. What do you do if they're not going to obey the court orders? In this case, this, the town can actually have the person cited for contempt. If the person willfully goes before the court and says, I'm not going to do it, the court can hold him in contempt. There's actually a famous case in Carterick County on this issue. You may be aware of it, of there were a pair of brothers in the eastern part of the county who refused to acknowledge they didn't own some property, and they spent several years in the Carterick County Jail on a contempt order. That's not the norm. Typically, what you see is, the town can execute an order of abatement. The town can go on the property and say, we're going to correct this. And the cost can be assessed to the property owner, property, a lien can be held on the property for the amount of the cost. And if the person doesn't pay it, you can foreclose on the property to recover your cost. That, again, underscores why it's important, and we believe, to give notice of violation to the property owner, because eventually, if someone doesn't comply, your bottom-line remedy is going to be to go against the property. Not that we want to do that, but that's, that's kind of the end of the road. All right, Mark, let's talk about penalties. The UDO is kind of all over the place on this, depending on the topic. On flood damage, the town is supposed to give a notice of violation to the owner or occupant of the property. The person is to take prompt corrective action. I do not know what prompt corrective action is. I can anticipate that if you're dealing with flood issues, the town would want to act quickly. It's not here, it's in your handout. Really interesting little side note here, this is the only place in the UDO where an individual has a right to a hearing in front of the floodplain administrator. All other times, a notice is issued, there really is no right to a hearing. You can, I assume, talk to the planning director or whomever, but in this instance, if you give notice of flood damage prevention violations, the person's entitled to a hearing in front of the floodplain administrator. Stormwater management, here, notice must be given to the owner, and I think we also said the person who violates. Interesting, the person has 30 days to bring the property into compliance, which is different from the flood damage prevention section, which just says promptly. Here, we have 30 days to bring the property into compliance. In another twist, the UDO says, a civil penalty will be assessed if the person doesn't bring the property into compliance within 30 days in an amount no less than $100, but no more than $1,000 for every day during which the violation continues. So, two things here. Here, we have an example of a daily accumulation of a fine. So, it is allowed in the UDO, it has to be allowed specifically. And we have a fine, but we have a range. For the first time in the UDO, we have a range of $100 to $1,000. And the UDO does not say who assesses the fine, and there's no criteria for assessing the amount of the fine. We think that, let's go to the next slide, please, Mark. We think that is a problem. We think there should be a graduated scale of fines or a set fine. You need to definitively say who's going to set the fine. That's going to alleviate a lot of problems for your staff, because otherwise, if you just leave it up to discretion, people are going to say you're playing favorites. Let's go next, Mark. Penalties. Let's talk about the dunes and vegetation protection regulations. I will admit, I missed this one originally. When I read UDO 9.5.3, the preamble, the opening paragraph, I just sort of glanced at. But in reading it, preparing for this meeting, it says, "Construction or land disturbance without a required dunes and vegetation permit is a violation of the UDO." Failure to comply, it goes on to say, failure to comply with an approved dunes and vegetation permit is a violation of the UDO. Okay. For these two, there is no notice required. If you're given a dunes and vegetation permit and you exceed its scope, that's a violation, and it's a $1,000 fine. If you take down trees or vegetation, or alter a dune without a permit, that's a violation, subject to a $1,000 fine. Now, the UDO, its tendency to want people to correct violations comes into play here, because the UDO says, if you fail to restore a dune after receiving notice after 60 days, it's a $1,000 fine for every day you do not bring the property into compliance. That's a heavy fine, but the person has 60 days to bring it into compliance. If you kill, damage, destroy, remove, or fail to replace or restore a tree in a required natural area after 60 days' notice, it's a $1,000 fine per tree for every day the owner does not bring the property into compliance. And the UDO goes on to say, each violation after 60 days is a new and separate offense. We read these regulations as saying, for the purpose of these regulations, the removal of each tree and the failure to replace each tree on a given parcel of land shall be reviewed as an individual violation of the UDO. Mark, let's skip ahead to the recommendation there. I apologize for the small word here. I took a little liberty here to try and rewrite. I took a little liberty here to try and rewrite this UDO for the Board, I hope you don't mind, to make it a little clearer. Of all the ordinances in the UDO, this is the one that gave me and my firm the most problems trying to interpret. I would encourage the Board to consider rewriting it to list number one, what are violations? Violations are, and you can see, A, basically disturbing the land without a permit or going beyond the limits of your permit, damaging trees, vegetations, and dunes. I tried to spell it out clearly there. And then there's a separate section labeled remedies. The remedies are civil penalty, $1,000 for each violation, rebuild damaged dunes, I'm sorry, replace damaged trees, replace damaged vegetation, and certificate of occupancy. I didn't discuss that earlier, the UDO does, this section, I should say, the UDO does say that if the property is not in compliance, you cannot get a certificate of occupancy. But this spells it out clearly. I'm going to jump ahead one, excuse me, for one second. Let's go back one, please, Mark. Issue number five there. Does the UDO require 60 days for vegetation to be replanted? I'm going to tell you folks, this one, you're going to blow me over with a feather on this one. I don't see where the UDO requires vegetation to be replaced. You can be ordered to replace a dune and ordered to replace a tree. I do not see where this section of the UDO requires a person to replace vegetation. It would still be a violation of the UDO to take down vegetation without a permit, but I just don't see where it says you have to replace it. I would, I can make a very good argument that's implied, but it doesn't state so explicitly. All right. Going to number, going back to number four, sorry. Sign regulations. This is a little interesting here. The town says a notice of violation must be given to the person violating the ordinance. There's a 10-day requirement to let the person, let the sign come into compliance. And it says the person doesn't, it's a misdemeanor. In an interesting twist here, any fines are retroactive to the date of the notice of violation. This is the only time I can find in the UDO where fines are applied retroactively. Issue number six. Does the UDO allow for daily fines to be levied for non-compliance? I've sort of touched on this as I went along. Short answer is, as a general rule, no. More detailed answer would be yes, if the UDO allows it. Fines may accrue on a daily basis if a person fails to restore its land to its natural state or fails to replace trees within 60 days' notice of the violation from the town. Fines accrue retroactively, as we just said, for signs, and fines pertaining to stormwater management violations. So, in summary, must fines be levied against the property owner? No, certain fines do not have to be, have to be levied against the property owner, they can be levied on others, although we would recommend that the property owner be the person who receives the notice. That person would have the most interest in making sure the violations are corrected. And we would recommend that you determine who is the property owner based upon the Carteret County tax records. Issue number two, can fines be levied upon a contractor violating the UDO? Yes, they can. I think that was stormwater management, that could be done, Mark, I think that's correct. But again, we would again recommend the primary person be the property owner. Can fines be levied if damage occurs on neighboring property? Under the UDO, we, we would say no. North Carolina federal laws will provide remedies for these violations, but the UDO we do not believe does. What may the town find violators of the UDO? Well, there is a schedule of fines in 9.4, as we've seen, that starts at $50 and goes up to $200 over a period of time. But there are also specific fines as for stormwater management, which varies from $100 to $1,000, and for dunes and vegetation, which requires a $1,000 fine. Does the UDO require 60 days for vegetation to be replanted? No, no, we, we don't see where that, it's in the UDO. However, we would recommend that the Board consider putting something in there to require vegetation to be replaced, just to create uniformity in the UDO. And finally, does the UDO allow for daily fines to be levied for non-compliance? And the short answer is no, unless specifically authorized by the UDO. Thank you, that's my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Smith from the Board?
Thank you, Kirby. That was a very informative presentation. You did good on your first PowerPoint, too, by the way. But I have a, obviously, I have a number of questions. And some of them aren't necessarily addressed by the UDO. It's, it's the methods and application of enforcement of the UDA ordinances. I also do have questions about the language that's used in this, because my whole career has been in regulatory work. I've been a zoning administrator, floodplain administrator, building inspector, CAMA regulator. In fact, I was the compliance and enforcement coordinator for the Division of Coastal Management for the state. And so, I, I do have a number of issues and questions with the UDO, and it certainly needs some rewriting. In my capacity as a commissioner, I do have concerns about protections for the town, taxpayers, you know, being sued in court, and also have concerns about the property owners, their rights and, and what they can do and can't do. And, and so, some of this, it's all discussion about the UDO and what the town can do against the people, but, but it's, it's the method and how that's done that I have, probably have more of my questions about. Are you able to address any of those questions tonight, or should I submit my questions?
If it's a general question, I'm happy to try and give you an answer. I will tell you, I've spent the better part of last month looking at the UDO. I'm more familiar with it now than I've ever been. And so, if you want to ask me a question, I'm happy to give you an answer, and I will tell you, if I don't know the answer, I will freely tell you I do not know.
Okay, because, just for an example, let's start with it. Part of the, the UDA requires replacement of trees, but not vegetation. But if the trees are removed and cut and gone, how does the town get evidence of that? And can the town just issue a violation just because it says so?
How the matter is investigated is not addressed by the UDO. In my, in the summary, Commissioner Sanderson said she wanted a comprehensive summary, and this is what I tried to, to give you there, Commissioner Sanderson. The UDO in the very beginning creates a framework like the federal government. The Board, you said, is the legislative body for the town. The town staff act as the executive body enforcing your ordinances. And the Board of Adjustment acts as the judiciary body. And so, the UDO states that the town staff, once they receive a complaint, are to investigate. It says they shall promptly investigate, but there's no timeline to be followed there. Now, how they investigate is not addressed by the UDO. There is one part of the UDO, interestingly enough, and I think it's in that worksheet that basically says, you, the town may investigate, can only go on property during reasonable hours and with the consent of the person. But if the person doesn't give consent, the town can get an administrative search warrant. I thought that was really interesting, because there's no tool in the UDO to explain how you get the administrative search warrant. I would assume that would be through the Board of Adjustment.
Actually, it's probably come under the State Enabling Acts, wouldn't it, under general statute?
It possibly could. So, so in terms of investigating, I don't know. The town has to use what tools it has available to it.
In, in order to defend that, if, if the town were to be taken to court for that, you'd have to be able to defend that, the evidence gathering. In other words, can the town just arbitrarily go up to someone and say, I'm going to give you a violation?
In theory, the town could give anybody a violation. And if there weren't, unless it's a stormwater management issue, they'd have, there's no right to a hearing in front of an official, but they could appeal it, the issue would go before the Board of Adjustment. And that's where the person would have an opportunity to be heard. I mean, going back to what I said a second ago, the town, violations can come to light one of two ways. The town can find it on its own, much like a police officer seeing a speeder going down the road, or it can be reported. If the violation is reported, then the town has an obligation to investigate it.
And would that investigation include due process, like interviews with witnesses such as the property owner, contractor, witnesses, even expert witnesses such as professional engineers and land surveyors?
Are you asking, does, do, do due process rights apply here? I do not know, but I do not believe so. I would have to look into it, but I, I do not know that due process rights.
Wouldn't you think it'd be like a, a common practice that most towns and jurisdictions with regulatory enforcement or police powers and, or enabling powers such as given by the municipalities and counties or given by the, by the state statutes, that that would be part of a process?
You know, the, the town would establish whatever process it wants to follow. Whether they wanted to follow that process would be up to the town.
Kirby, I'm in. Sir, specifically for the UDO, which I have reviewed, the only opportunity for notice adhering in administrative hearing such as you're referring is within that floodplain administration issue. With regards to everything else, as you saw, let's say, a violation of the DMV permit, no notice, nothing is required, it's a flat fine, which I imagine if you guys are planning on rewriting some portions of this, you certainly can add a notice adhering compartment into some of these, but they don't currently exist now except for floodplain.
So, that's scary to think, that a government power can just come up and give you a violation and accuse you of possible criminal activity, misdemeanor, and without any type of investigation giving you, you know, asking the first questions. All right, and so now, you answered that one. What if, can town officials overrule professional experts such as a professional land surveyor or engineer or a contractor, you know, licensed contractor or?
Well, that issue really isn't in the UDO. I, I hate to sound like a broken record. The town can issue a notice of violation, period, much like a speeding ticket. The person has the right to go before the Board of Adjustment. The town there would have to present its case to the Board of Adjustment. The, at that point, as Mark alluded, a person will have the right to present his or her case to the Board. The Board will rule. And if the person who is, let's call the person the violator, loses the Board of Adjustment, they can appeal that decision pursuant to the UDO to Carteret County Superior Court. So that is where the issue will ultimately be reviewed.
And I, I, see, that's the nature of my questions, really. It's not addressed by the UDO, it's the application of how it's being enforced. For instance, if, if the town officials are aware of a violation after the fact, but maybe that permit's still valid and construction's still going on, but they take no action, and then the next person who does the same thing receives the violation and penalties and, and follows suit, what could be the consequences of the town and the, for that, and town staff?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but the short answer would be, I don't know. The UDO, as I recall, and I'm going to look at Mark and see if he recalls, I think has a non-waiver position in it, meaning just because the town doesn't enforce an ordinance in one situation doesn't mean they waive the right to enforce it in others.
That was going to be the kind of gist of where I was going to on the next one. Can the town waive enforcement actions on some properties and not others?
The UDO is silent to that. I have not researched that issue, so I don't feel comfortable giving you an answer except to say, there is an argument for selective enforcement. We see it in criminal cases, but, and other than that, I would say I don't know. I, I would like an opportunity to research it, would probably be a better answer.
And so, I guess what, what, in other words, the town can't really discriminate or do selective enforcement, or it shouldn't, that's just probably not a good practice or policy.
If I can just say, I don't feel it's my place here, working for the town as an attorney, to say what its policy or practice should be. I mean, clearly, the town cannot discriminate. That, that would be violation of our constitutional rights if it violated on, you know, the protected classes of sex, race, creed, national origin, religion, things like that.
I wasn't referring to like gender or race or anything like that, I was just saying, I guess it's more biased or, I don't even want to use that term, really, but it's more selective, I suppose, would be my question, because I just don't want the town to be sued and cost taxpayers a lot of money. And likewise, I don't want the property owners, you know, to have to go through unnecessary hardships that are. And so, now let me ask this question. Can, this is referring to the use of drones, I think you've already addressed one question, can the town use drones?
Yes, sir.
And it was, yes, with consent of the property owner.
It was more nuanced than that. The town can use drones with the consent of the property owner.
To do specifically code enforcement?
Right, but the town can also use drones in plain view situations. Meaning, if you see a violation from the road, then the town is not required to ignore it. You can use a drone in plain view situations to look at the violation.
And overhead photography? That's not visible from the road?
That's, you're getting to the gray area there.
And what about dissemination of that photographic material that's captured by the drone?
That is well outside the scope of what I'm prepared to discuss today, I apologize.
That's okay, I was just asking, and now, and if the town has put this on their applications now for building permits, and I've had a person come to me who applied for a permit recently, and they did not want to give consent for the drone to be flown over their property for whatever reason. But the, when they were just trying to submit it online, they got rejected, they couldn't submit the application. I, I don't know if the process is that you got to come into the town hall and make application as a result of that, or if the town is going to deny a permit. Can the town deny a permit if you, if a person objects to having drone flights?
I, I believe it can. I, I believe it can make as a condition of getting a permit, consent to inspections. Specifically drone flights, I would need to research that, but I think it could.
Because I know the state, the State Enabling Acts do, do give that permission with a, with a permit to enter the property, enter the property, for reasonable hours, but it doesn't say anything about drone flights.
Drone flights, drones are a burgeoning, if that's a good word, area of the law.
And that could be a, like a court hazard for the town if it's not careful, is what I'm thinking. Okay. I have some more questions, but I'll submit those, I'll just submit those in writing. I'll have some more questions, but I'll submit those, I'll just submit those in writing. If it's the mayor, I want to file a policy on that, but...
No problem. Any other questions?
I'd like to say, Kirby, thank you. This is incredibly dry material, and you went through it and summarized it well. And I think we do have a little bit of homework, and I noticed, having gone through this myself, you can tell there are about eight different people that had the pen over time, and I think the review that you've done is gonna help us stitch it together so it's easier to follow. So I think that that, if nothing else, is admirable work, so thank you for that. I would also suggest that we replay this recording for the planning board to help guide them through the review of the sections that you point out, because I think you explained things very simply, at least to where I could understand it, so that might be helpful to them or at least make it available to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Is there a motion to submit the suggested UDO changes to the planning board for consideration and review?
Make a motion to submit the recommended changes.
Commissioner Brownlow, is the motion all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion's carried, thank you. All right, item number 12, Matt Zap and Chief Mike Panzarella with a presentation of potential Beach Patrol Jeep replacement. You guys, excuse me, please carry on, I'll be right back.
We'll go ahead and get the presentation loaded up. So Mike and I are here tonight to talk to you about the replacement of one Beach Patrol vehicle. And if you will, what we wanted to do was, we had talked about when Chief Mathias was here a month ago and the replacement need for all four Beach vehicles in Ocean Rescue. We're here tonight to talk to you about the request for specific Beach Patrol vehicles. Within the Police Department, we currently have these vehicles in inventory, a 2021, '22, and another '22 with roughly 54, 38, and 23,000 miles respective. Our policy with Beach vehicles, we try to run them up until their warranty period, which in this particular case would be at that 60,000 mile mark. So it's time to replace the 2021. We have good news tonight, no change in cost. So we currently pay $762 for this particular unit. We have an estimated minimum of $8,000 coming back in residual from this Jeep, which we usually see 99.9% of the time. They tell us that number is low, so we do anticipate potentially slightly more than $8,000. What we recommend doing is turning in this 2021 Jeep, we'll get a check back, $8,000 usually, or more. We would put $5,000 down on the next Jeep and keep the remaining $3,000 cash windfall balance for the outfit on the new vehicle, so it'll be net neutral. And so our recommendation tonight is to authorize our staff through Laura's office to lease a 2025 Jeep Wrangler. It should be $750 or less. Our estimate when we put $8,000 was $726 a month, I believe, so we wanna make sure we have enough money to do the upfitting. We're transferring all the usable items from the current 2021 to the new 2025, but you know that the beach conditions sometimes have eaten up light bars and the like. So at this particular point, our ask for this evening is for us to place a new order bank with Jeep before it closes for a 2025 Wrangler at a cost plus or minus rate of the $750 mark, which will cost us nothing more than what the budget is currently paying. And then you'll have, the Beach vehicle will be brand new starting in spring. Any questions on that?
The new vehicle, two doors or four doors?
It would be a four-door unit for the officers. Any other technical questions, I'll allow Chief to answer, so if you want.
Would we ever have a two-door?
There's just not enough room. You know, if we have a missing child on the beach or something, sometimes we have to put one or both parents in the vehicle with us, so the four-door is more usable.
All right. How about the, when we talked about the fire department vehicles, who went with Toyotas, but this is a Jeep, what's the rationale there, one to the other?
So the officers prefer the Jeep. They just, you know, in order to lock their equipment, to store their equipment, to keep it dry, you know, our officers have other equipment different from what the lifeguards would use it. Needs to be dry.
All right, thank you.
Mark, would you please put the presentation back up?
So then our next item would be for preemptive warning to the board that when we, hopefully tonight, we'll look at scheduling our budget retreat for January or soon thereafter. When Mike and I reviewed the Police Department inventory, they have only one vehicle per officer, and they have one item that they maintain. It's a 1918 Ford Taurus, what year is that, 2010 or 11? It's a much older Ford, but it still runs well, and we keep that in cycle for a replacement unit. So when one goes in for service or an oil change, whatnot, we have a vehicle to use in inventory. So looking at the current inventory, there are three Dodge Chargers, which are currently owned by the town of Emerald Isle, and those Chargers are 2019 models, if I'm not mistaken, and they have upwards of 100,000 miles per unit on them. The problem with that is, it's the question of if, it's the question of when. And so we've seen an engine replacement at 14,000, transmission replacements at six to seven, sometimes 8,000. So when you push them beyond their life cycle, they tend to be the money pit, if you will. So the request and need for this next budget cycle of FY 2526 will be the replacement of three units. And you'll have a decision to make that each of those units currently today are gonna be on state bid at approximately $45,000 per replacement unit with an outfit cost of $5,000, which is gonna put that at $50,000 per unit. So when we would look at those three frontline patrol vehicles, it would be an initial investment in this next budget cycle of $150,000. Your options would be to pay in cash out of the budget, to pay in cash out of fund balance, to borrow that money over time. We'd recommend a 60-month note, because then you would run those vehicles for 60 months and then surplus them at 60 months, which keeps them under that roughly 60,000 mile mark. Or you could look at a lease choice. Now, we've had a lot of discussion in this room, and I know there's different varying opinions on the board about leasing, it's just simply vehicular amateurization, it's not an actual lease. So please don't be miscreed by that term. So we'll use an example, if I'm not mistaken, that we have in our fleet today a Chevrolet 1500 vehicle that Police Department's using, and that payment is around $535 per month, plus or minus. Well, that's what it was in 2020 and 2021 when we were looking at lease choices. Those numbers now, if you were to lease that vehicle with the increased interest rate, is gonna put that payment closer to $1,000 a month. So it's not necessarily as lucrative today to do long-term financing as it was four or five years ago. So you'll have a decision to make. So if you're running really quick back-of-the-envelope math, if you went and bought a five-year-old F-150 today with 60,000 miles, you're gonna spend around $30,000. We would buy that new vehicle in our budget cycle for $45,000. We'd borrow the money, we'd make our payments over the 60-month period, and then we would assume that when we go to sell that, we're gonna get about $30,000 back. The actual net cost would only be 15,000 divided over five years, so it's a $3,000 self-lease price that you would have to invest. And so that's what we try to do, is drive the initial costs down. We've done a great job doing that over the last 60 months, and the current program has saved us about a quarter million dollars a year. But you'll have a different decision to make when we look at that for first quarter of 2025, because the numbers just aren't there where they were two, three, four, five years ago. So we wanted to give you that early, we'll answer any questions. Here's the problem. There are no sedans available. And I look at Mike and I look at Chad, there are no sedans available. None of the big three are making a police package vehicle a PPV sedan. They're just not available. And so now we have a choice between Explorers, other platforms, but we really believe that pickup trucks have the highest resale value at the end of our period. We don't want a full team of pickup trucks, but we have to have a blend. And the balance of a four-wheel-drive truck allows it to put it on the beach in the event of a bad weather situation, ice storm or snowstorm, and then we can still do our duties. But the reality is, this team has done a great job of moving those cars around, they're trying to keep their milages down, and I can't thank Public Works enough for all the maintenance that they've done. By going to this style of program of keeping them 36, 48, or 60 months, we have driven our maintenance costs from what it was a near $100,000 a year down to closer to $20,000. And so if you keep your fleet under five years, your major repairs are near zero. If you run that vehicle beyond that five-year mark, we will encounter problems. If you have any deeper dive questions, we can either try to answer them tonight, which most of us have that data in front of us, or we'll pause all of that and answer any further questions you have at the retreat. Again, if we go back that one slide, we are asking for your concurrence tonight to authorize the Jeep and for us to lease... I'm gonna do it, so don't do it. We'll go back. Authorize staff to lease the 2025 Jeep at a net zero cost, maintaining $750 a month.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the information on the Jeep, and thank you for the pre-information for this year's budget retreat. So I'll open it up to questions, we'll talk more about the three vehicles at the budget retreat. I'll open it up for questions and our discussion from the board regarding the replacement, potential replacement of the 2021 Wrangler for a 2025. Board belongs to the floor. Excuse me, the floor. I'm gonna roll there for a minute, you know what I mean.
I know what you mean.
Any questions for Matt?
The replacement is because the vehicle's at its service life, the end of its useful service life, or...
That's correct, and we've recently had some mechanical issues with it.
Is it rust issue with these vehicles?
I'm sure underneath, probably so, and we're seeing some, obviously on the light bars, but with the implementation of us being able to carry the vehicles over to Swansboro and have them washed, all of our Beach patrols, it was mandatory, Beach vehicles, rather, mandatory that they subscribe to the program, so they're getting washed regularly.
Thank you, Chief. And this have no impact on the budget or the upcoming budget, it's revenue neutral, including with depreciation?
In fact, with appreciation, it's actually, these vehicles will appreciate, and then we'll get a dividend back at the conclusion of the period.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt or Chief Panzarella?
I'd like to make a motion to approve town staff to dispose resale 2021 Jeep Wrangler and replace it with a 2025 Jeep Wrangler VI Enterprise.
Thank you. Commissioner Sawyer with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Motion's carried, thank you very much.
We have one more item.
Yes, sir, please.
You have in your packet a letter from Laura regarding the upgrading of our video surveillance system within the Police Department. I'm respectfully asking your permission to utilize funds that we received from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Since 2017, our agency has accumulated a little over $11,000 and to replace the video system when inside this building, everything to exclude our interview room, we have got a price right now for a little over $10,000. So I would respectfully ask that you allow us to utilize those funds to upgrade that system. We've had that system for quite some time, and it was under the domain or management of Paul Cheshire, and as many of you all know, Paul has passed away. So what issue that's led to us is, we can't access any recordings on there, no passwords. We've had a couple of people come out and look at it, they can't break the passwords, and all the information we're getting is it's time to upgrade. And so we have those funds at no cost to the town or to our taxpayers. We, I respectfully ask you request, I respectfully ask that you approve the request to upgrade that system.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief on the surveillance system?
Is there anything significant that you need to get off of the old system?
Not that we can determine at this time, no, but again, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and, you know, that incident could come tomorrow. And so the need is there, those are old analog cameras, these are much better cameras we're going with, and they'll allow more easier access remotely for us.
You want to have protocol in place to prevent passwords from going with those that go?
Most definitely. That was unfortunately a hard lesson.
Commissioner, that's a great question, we already have done that, and we want to thank Greg Hayes for his assistance in the IT Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief?
Does he need a motion to approve that?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the update to the cameras as Chief has requested.
All right, Commissioner Taylor with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you, Chief. Appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number 13 is the Highway 58 speed limit to Lee Avenue. Matt, can you lead us in that discussion?
Yes, sir, gladly.
Thank you.
Department of Transportation reached out to my office, and they have asked us to extend the 35 mile an hour section of the speed limit from roughly where we're sitting, the 7500 block, to roughly 7309 Emerald Drive, plus or minus a few feet. And the intention was citizens' concerns that were levied to the traffic control engineer, and the recommendation from DOT is to consider that, but they do not want to do anything despite the town board, so they're looking for your concurrence before they make any adjustments. They can either ask you to leave it, you can tell them you prefer to leave it alone, or make the adjustments that they recommend.
So what I'm hearing, or what I'm understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the DOT is willing to consider and/or move the 35 mile an hour speed limit to Lee Avenue or thereabouts. Obviously, they have the authority to do what they want to, but, excuse me, but they're looking for the support of the town through the Board of Commissioners, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. It's a 1,300-foot movement from its current position, 1,300 feet eastbound, which would put it directly past the avenue.
How far, directly across from Lee or exactly?
Directly at 7309 Emerald Drive, so wherever that falls, it's just...
Little east of the avenue.
Just due east, it's a physical 1,300 foot from its current site, yes, sir. One quarter mile.
All right, one quarter mile.
Well, technically, that would be 1,320 feet if we recount.
We're racing thousands.
No, sir.
But yeah, all right, so DOT is willing to do it, the DOT is willing to proceed as the town sees fit. Again, the board has the floor, the floor doesn't have the board. I'll open up the board discussion on whether or not it has, or the DOT has support of the board. So want to move the 35 mile an hour sign or not, it's up to you guys to support the DOT in whichever way they go.
Yeah, I think that there have been a lot of accidents at the intersection of Lee and Emerald, that the lowering of the speed limit could possibly prevent, I mean, I'm not saying that it was any motorist's fault or any individual's fault, but it's, that's a very busy street for people trying to access the beach and the sound likewise, and I think it would be a good idea to reduce that speed limit for 1,300 feet.
Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else?
I think it's very nice that the DOT reached out to us as far as asking our thoughts on this, that's very nice, because they have the full power to do as they wish, and I think it's very considerate to ask the local people what they think, and so I'm very happy that they're doing this.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Make a motion that we offer our concurrence to NCDOT in full support of reducing the speed limit from 45 to 35, 1,300 feet west or east of the existing 35 mile per hour speed zone.
Commissioner Sanderson has the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you.
I'm gonna need about a week, if I get used to that, letting you know I need a week.
Talk to the chief, talk to the... All right, number 14, award asphalt bid. Mr. Zap, Mr. Smith, welcome back.
Seems like we're just sharing a bowl of Brunswick stew.
Mayor and board, we're back up one more time, and last month, we provided you a list of roadways that were in need of asphalt and repair. There was a primary Phase 1 and an alternate option. As you recall, we had a little over $225,000 to utilize in Powell Bill funding. We're pleased to report tonight that our lowest and best bidder, which is Onslow Grading and Paving, for both Phase 1 and Phase 2, came in at a total cost of $178,200. What we would recommend is the board to consider allocation and awarding that contract, and then staff is working through the other roads you had on your comprehensive list last month, which would be then Roads 12, 13, 14, and 15, and we'll go as far down on that list as we can. So the good news is, our lowest and best bid came in below our estimated cost, and we'll be able to extend even beyond Phase 2, our recommendation tonight.
Our recommendation tonight is to issue town staff the ability or town manager's office to award a contract to Onslow Grading and Paving for the repair of roads at $178,200.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
No, I think it's a good deal. I would also like to, and I'll get to the motion part of this, I think this is a great deal, but we should probably think about, from a strategic perspective, all the roads in town and aside, above and beyond just Powell Bill, what would it take to do all the roads that needed over a five or 10-year period or whatever? So, Mr. Smith, if you can start thinking about that priority-wise, how we would stage such a thing and even construct such a procurement, I think it's one of the things that I hear most about, and I don't hear people complain much, but there are some hotspots that need help, and it's probably more than what the Powell Bill affords us.
So if you don't mind, the reason I'm up is because we actually have done that, and over the last 60 months, so that conversation is one that we've addressed, and what we'd like to do is we'll bring that back up and educate and share conversation with the board at the January retreat, Commissioner. And we had leveraged all of our additional FEMA projects, if you had been a part of those conversations too. So we did additional paving. When we did Lee Avenue, we made repairs, we did additional paving on Cedar and whatnot. So what we did is we ended up putting out over $600,000 of asphalt repairs the previous budget cycle in addition to Powell Bill, and so we've worked diligently on that. And I can tell you that the situation and condition that Emerald Isle faces puts us in the top 5% of the state. There are 95% of communities that are far more worse off than we are. There was also a leveraged conversation by your former Commissioner Normile, who was seated at your position, I believe, shared a white paper on that specific topic, that Emerald Isle has approximately 45 lane miles of road, and it's based on a mileage split with per capita. And your per capita is based on the total people that reside here, not the daily traffic. So unfortunately, our cost calculation comes from the plus or minus 4,000 full-time residents combined with our 45 lane miles of road. If we were to utilize the 50,000 daily count, it would take our allocation to a completely different level. But the problem is, for us to get more money, someone would have to get less money. And so that conversation was brought up with the League of Municipalities, and there was not much palate to try to get the mountains and the coast additional funding on a Powell Bill, because if the mountains and the coast got additional money, that means Charlotte, the I-77, the I-40, urban Crescent Corridor, those kind of areas and communities which have explosive growth would get less money. So it's an arm wrestling match where we're the smaller arm versus the bigger arm. So we have to come up with a plan, as Commissioner Wooton has indicated, on how we would pay out of local tax dollars to do that. And so we can show you the total lineal footage that we've completed in this budget and bid cycle, and as you've all discussed, that the more roads that you pave, the cost per foot can go down, but I want to point out it's not dramatic. So there's a cost for milling, there's a cost for asphalt paving, there's a cost for mobilization, and then the cost for restriping. And we tackled Coast Guard Road most recently because it is the highest-traveled road that is in our jurisdictional responsibility at 26% of daily traffic, or roughly 1.2 million cars per year. So when we tackled it, that's why we did Coast Guard first, and then we went to our Priority 1 roads, and we're working through all Priority 1. But we can tell you what the total overall calculation will be for milling and paving of the 45 lane miles, and that's an easy fix. We can get you that number, no problem.
Thanks, sir.
We'll have a comprehensive presentation available to the board at the retreat. If you'd prefer, we'd gladly do that in January.
That'd be great, thank you.
No problem, not at all.
All right, well, anybody got anything else? I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to award a contract to Onslow Grading and Paving for the repair of roads at a total cost of $178,200.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wooton with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you, gentlemen. Item number 15, a consideration of memorandum of understanding with Marsoc. Up again, sir.
The information that you have in your packet under item 15 is just a simple request that has come over from the government for us to work with them, and we show that this process is fair and standard, so we're just asking for the board's concurrence because we can't enter a new contract without your blessing.
Questions for Mr. Zap?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town of Emerald Isle and the Emerald Isle Police Department to engage in MOU with Marsoc as described in the attachment that you sent out.
Motion's on the floor by Commissioner Wooton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Item number 16, discussion of stormwater requirements related to large-scale residential development where ground disturbance exceeds 10,000 square feet. Commissioner Brownlow, you have the floor, sir.
I have a, I wasn't aware of this provision in the stormwater ordinances, but the property owner, Tim Misner, approached me about why he had to submit a contractual document with the town on an annual basis and hire an engineer to inspect his stormwater system on a single-family residential structure annually, on a single-family dwelling. And I looked at the contract, and it's, right here, it's about 20 some odd pages with the stormwater plan and the contract agreements, notarized statement, everything. And I work for an engineering company now in my retirement, and that's something they normally do on commercial projects when you have vast parking lots of impervious coverage and with a lot of stormwater infrastructure in place. And so this could be, in this case, I suppose this person has a large lot that was disturbed of 10,000 square feet, but doesn't mean it was all paved, just means that they disturbed 10,000 square feet in area, and that could be easy to do with the house sizes and Emerald Isle, especially on the sound front. And so I was just looking at this, and I was thinking, in my opinion, I think it's just a little excessive for like one or two family dwellings to have to go through something that commercial businesses like Publix or Emerald Plantation would have to do. And so if the board feels like it, we could send this to the planning board. I think I wrote in recommendations where that would capture just taking it out of the ordinance and don't have to put anything back in, just exempting the one or two family dwellings from this engineering, annual engineering study. If the board feels that's what they want to do.
Thank you, sir. So Commissioner Brownlow, if I'm hearing you correctly, recommending verbally and in email, this be sent back over to the planning board for review to exempt one or two family dwellings from that annual report, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Brownlow or discussion? Or you can go straight to a motion to request a review from the planning board. Decision is divorced.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we send this stormwater provision for maintenance agreement to the planning board for review.
Motion's on the floor by Commissioner Brownlow, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Smartest people in the House, Commissioner Hunter, you're up with the 2025 budget calendar.
Thank you. I don't have a presentation, so if it's all right, I'll stay right here. But I have prepared our budget calendar. It's a draft, and it's in your packet, and this is a tried and true calendar. We've used it for many years. And what we have here is proposal, and I thought I would just highlight a few key dates. January 13th and 14th are our proposed dates for our budget workshop or our budget retreat. The 14th of January, we would also invite the public for any early citizen comment on the budget. And then our staff, departments will work together, prepare the budget booklet, and present that to the board at the May regular meeting, and we would work together to approve the budget, hopefully at June 10th, at your June meeting. And so that's proposed there, and I'm open to any questions, and if you're okay with that, we would ask that you adopt it.
This looks good, Laura, thank you. Do you know when we're gonna know what the effect of the property assessments are gonna be?
So I spoke with the county today. They're still working on the values. They said they need to look at December sales, so we probably won't have anything for our January budget workshop. I know for sure we'll have something in March, but what we can do is ask for estimates and get some details. Sometimes they'll release numbers to us in advance with the caveat and letting us know what's gonna change, so we can start looking at those numbers.
That'd be super helpful, and the only thing that I think is different this year than in prior years, or that might be a significant change more so than it has been in prior years, so, but otherwise, it looks good to me.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025/26 budget calendar, proposed?
Thank you, Commissioner Sanderson, with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you very much. Item 18, 2025 official regular meeting schedules.
So, meeting schedules are pretty much the same days of the month as normal. Just two things. The planning board decided to separate the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board meetings into two separate regular meetings. Per Chris Seberg, the regular meetings were just a little too long for them, so they wanted to split them up. And then another one is the Board of Commissioner meeting falls on November 11th, which is Veterans Day. Town offices are closed on that day, so it's really up to you if you want to keep it there, if you want to push it to the third Tuesday of that month, or second Monday, second Wednesday.
So the only variable is the November 2025 meeting, that's the only conflict?
Yes.
All right. Other than that conflict, I'll let you all discuss, third Tuesday of November or anything else? Board has the floor on that, unless they see a need for change on the other 11 or so.
Can we just go ahead and say third Tuesday of that month?
That's up to y'all.
Go ahead and take that problem.
That's up to y'all, make a motion or adopt.
Make a motion to change the date to the third Tuesday, November.
So your motion could be to accept what's presented?
Okay. Yeah. Make a motion to approve Emerald Isle's 2025 official regular meeting schedule.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Sorry with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you very much. I do apologize, on item 19, the special meeting minutes were revised. I mistakenly thought they were re-put into the consent agenda to be approved, so I will ask for a motion to approve the October 31st, 2024 special meeting minutes revised edition.
So moved.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Comments from the town clerk? Mic still hot?
None.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Things are fine, aren't they?
Just took me a second to learn how to use it. As you might know, Mr. Kellis can't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for him, and so this is sort of a battlefield promotion for me. I would just like to say, we received an email from Mr. Zap on Friday asking us to review the town ordinances based upon, Mr. Seberg's going to, anyway, we were asked to review 10 ordinances, I believe. We're hopefully gonna try and have that to the town by the end of the week.
Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Zap?
Sure, following up with Mr. Smith, it was 160D language as well as changes to the annualized process that comes over from School of Government, correct, Mr. Seberg? So yes, we'd love the attorney to review any of that before we make any adoptions, adaptations, or recommendations to the board for change.
Speaking to Mr. Hardman, as he came to the podium, I'm gonna ask the board for clarification specific to the 330 issue. What would you like us as staff to do with that based on your findings here tonight? And then we also had the issue at the 7305 or 06 location that we were working with. So we have gone back and forth with legal on those issues, and again, staff's position is, the data has been provided, we're just looking for the actual answer, and then we'll execute however the board wishes.
What answer are you looking for? What's the question?
So you would like to resolve Mr. Hardman's ask from this evening to do that. Staff doesn't feel it's in the position to handle the case at 330 Live Oak or to handle the case at the 7300 block of Sound Drive. We have asked, the mayor's asked, I believe, five or six different specific times, we want to know what should be done, fine or no fine, if there's a fine, and then how that was to be handled. So we've asked this question, we're just looking for clarity to answer, Mr. Hardman, we'll gladly do that. We all want a resolve to this issue.
Mayor, I need a, I'd like to make a motion to be excused from this discussion.
All right, motion on the floor to, for Mr. Brownlow to recuse himself from this discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Sir. At least four.
What's preventing you from doing, like every other property?
So we still don't have an answer of whether we should or should not, and we went through this whole process tonight. It's not about Mr. Brownlow and 330. It's not about the lady that owned 730X. We've asked for the answer, so when we asked the question last two meetings, I'm gonna make what I know are findings of fact, and I'm not gonna be offensive to anyone in the space. Our staff is determined, I'm gonna look to our planner, has a violation of the 35% rule occurred at 330? Were there three trees cut down on the neighbor's lot, yes or no? Was there an expanded retaining wall within the 35% area, or was the expanded retaining wall outside of the 35% natural vegetated area? So there is a violation. There was arbitration, and then there was a removal of that arbitration. So when we had, your firm had negotiated with Mr. Hardman. So you see why we're still confused as staff. We just need to know, we know what the findings of fact are, we needed you to interpret those findings of fact, which led to tonight's presentation. Based on my interpretation of your findings of fact, there was a failure to comply with the Dunes and Vegetation Ordinance, which should necessitate a minimum $1,000 fine, that should be standard. And then the three trees that were cut down on the neighbor's property without permission, there's no fine. I believe that the Brownlos have gone out of their way to comply with the neighbor, they've worked in good faith with them. It was not negligent or intentional, it was unintentional, and they've resolved that issue. And then the retaining wall, the communication back to the town, we didn't have that. So the engineer has now stamped that the 35% with revegetation should be compliant. So we just want to resolve it. So if there's no notice of violation that needs to be sent, no fine that needs to be sent, we're good. If there is, we need to send it. We just need clear directive from Carolina Law Group, because, I'm not speaking for Mr. Seberg, I'm only gonna speak for my chair, it's difficult, as he's our supervisor, he's our elected official, we want to treat him with kindness, dignity, and care equitable to all, so how do we do that?
Am I on?
Yes.
Turn your green round.
If there was a Dunes and Vegetation permit issued for 33, sorry, 330 Live Oak Street, if the removal of trees and vegetation exceeded the scope of that permit, that is a violation, and there's a mandatory $1,000 fine. The accompanying the notice of violation should be instructions on how to remedy the The homeowner would have 60 days to implement the, to restore the property, excuse me. And if that's not done within 60 days, then you're gonna hit the $1,000 a day penalty. So since there was a Dunes and Vegetation permit issued, if the land disturbance violated the conditions of that permit, there should be a notice of violation issued and a $1,000 fine assessed.
So again, that's what we've asked Carolina Law Group to help us provide since July the 30th. If you can provide us that, not in a ghost letter, we'll provide that. Whatever, exactly whatever you write, we'll provide over to the property owner of 330. In my understanding, they've already worked diligently to do a Dunes and revegetation plan, and we have that on file, so I believe that they're going to be compliant, and then upon payment, that their CO can be issued, but I'll allow the planning director to handle that. So that's my first ask. The second ask is to the woman who accidentally took out five tree, well, she took out seven, two of which were deemed, one was dangerous, one was dying, so there's five trees. Should she be fined, and if so, how much? And is it a notice of violation? How should we handle it? We've asked you to provide that one as well. Because of all the ambiguity that you presented here tonight, we just wanted clarity to come from legal on those two particular issues, and that's what we've, that's what continue to stand as our stance. Now I'm gonna pause, did I capture all that correct, Mr. Seberg? That's all we're asking.
I would say 7330 should be treated the same way. If there, no, I have to take that back, I apologize. As my understanding, 7330, there was no Dunes and Vegetation permit issued, trees were taken down, so therefore it is a violation. So therefore it is a violation of the UDO. She should be, a notice of violation should be issued, she should be assessed a thousand.
Not a dunes and veg, but a tree permit. All she was doing was tree pruning and maintenance, so that one required dunes and vegetation permit, it's a tree permit, and depends on how you want to label it, that's why I want to be very accurate and specific. And so that's the issue where she failed to pull a $65 permit, we would have gone to that site, inspected the trees, identified that two should have been removed, five should have been retained, so we want to be clear on that. And then the second will be the follow-up, which I think you're going to get to, if she removed one tree, I think it requires her to put two back, not just one, is that accurate? Is it two for one or one for one? Well, there was conversation in the email trail about two for one versus one for one, and I wanted to point out to this room, to this board, that there's not room for that. She didn't have any other room to put back two. And so those trees, if our understanding is correct, and we just did another public informations video, it's, she took out very healthy live trees, but all that she can put back in is a tree that is a minimum of ten feet tall, three inches of caliper, at thirty-six inches above grade, which would be the soil stabilization line, and that's what she would have to put back to be compliant. So the question is, is it a $1,000, a zero fine, $1,000, or $5,000 fine for removal of five healthy trees without a tree permit?
May I have one second? I'm, I must confess, I'm not familiar with the difference between a tree permit and just the dunes and vegetation permit.
Trees fall under D and B permits.
Right, so we just want to be clear. Right, so-
So we're not asking to put you on the spot on either case tonight. Again, you've asked, and the mayor's asked my staff, we're just, if you write the two letters for those two parcel properties on your letterhead and not ghosted for us, we believe that that means that you've reviewed it, that we're on good standing and we can issue it, and from this point forward, the board can work with the planning board and/or your firm to clean up all the ambiguity, because if this could happen to somebody that we know that understands and is trying to follow the rules, we don't want this to happen at all. And that's the whole point is, there's a lot of moving parts here, we're not trying to target anyone, all we're trying to do is treat everyone the same, because the neighbor filed a complaint on this particular parcel on June the twelfth, which initiated all this conversation.
I, I would say, since there was no permit issued and trees were removed, um, it would be a violation, it would, a notice should be issued and a $1,000 fine assessed. She would have sixty days to replace the trees, um, that were removed.
$1,000 per tree, or?
$1,000.
Plaid.
Yes, if she fails to replace the trees, then the fine becomes $1,000 per tree-
Per day.
Just want to be clear.
Per day, after sixty days.
Yes.
I appreciate that because our interpretation was $1,000 per tree that was removed, and that's the stance that we've been operating under. So if your interpretation is $1,000, so I want to be clear to the board as you go forward, if somebody goes into a location and removes twenty or thirty trees, are we fining them $1,000? Because it doesn't seem it has a lot of weight, claw, or strength to it.
I may, sir, at the outset, for the violation of taking down trees without a permit, $1,000, they then have sixty days to replace said trees. If they do not, that is when the $1,000 per tree, per day goes into effect.
So what I'll share back with legal is, my suspicion, based on previous boards, I'm not sure what the palate of this board will be, but the intent for Emerald Isle is to not do that, and the fine of $1,000 is not what the UDO review committee wanted to see, because they even talked about $10,000 per tree and pushed it back down to $1,000 per tree. So I think that's a conversation that the board will want to address going forward, but thank you for the clarity. Chris, did I miss anything, is there anything else you need to be effective? Okay, thank you.
Not waiting on me.
I mean, I, I believe that what's at issue here is we've, the manager has asked for two letters, um, 330 Live Oak and seventy-three oh whatever.
330 Live Oak and seventy-three thirty, um, Sound Drive.
Seventy-three thirty, so, thank you. From CLG on your letterhead and-
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we, uh, request that formally and, uh, be given a timeframe, when we can expect that.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has the motion, all in favor? What timeframe?
No, I'm asking for the timeframe.
End of the week? I'm more, I'm more a man down at the firm.
Sure, I understand. It, it, yeah, and if, if that gives you enough time, great, if you need a little bit longer, then tell us that.
If I, if I need any more time, I will notify Mr. Zap and tell him I need more time and tell, explain why, but I, I would think two letters Friday would be.
And by Friday thirteenth.
Motion amended to by Friday thirteenth, barring any other notification. Motion is on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just going to vote no because I feel like they asked you to write the letters, so just write the letters, I don't realize why we have to make a motion about it and why this is being elevated and it's dragged on for as long as it has, if it sounds like we know what the answer is, but.
Understood, thank you, sir. Motion's carried, three, two.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you want me to provide the letters to the town and you mail them out?
If you just email us the letter, we gladly will send them out, it's no problem.
Thank you.
And what, what we normally do is we'll send it to the recipient's electronic that we have an email, we send it standard USPS, and we'll also send it certified.
Perfect, I just didn't want there to be any misunderstandings.
All right, thank you all. All right, uh, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring Commissioner Brownlow back in.
Oh, yeah, thank you, keep me in check on that, motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back, sir. All right, uh, to, 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 comments from the commissioners, Commissioner-
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
If, uh, notice of violation or whatever, that some kind of letter's going to be issued, how does that affect the, or does that affect a certificate of occupancy if compliance is achieved?
Great question.
Um, the town cannot deny a certificate of occupancy if you're in compliance, uh, with the dunes and vegetation permit. If you've restored the property, then you cannot be denied.
So if we have an engineer certificate that says the property's in compliance, is that sufficient?
I don't know what standard the town would use on that.
I would answer, absolutely, yes, sir. If you, if it reads that you're now in compliance with revegetation, then the CO would be issued, absolutely.
That's what we provided. We had, we got engineers and a professional land surveyor saying that meets the thirty-five percent compliance.
It does now, with the revegetation.
That was before the, we hadn't even landscaped.
So, I mean, I don't want to be disruptive, but I'll ask Chris, was it in compliance when we visited the site in, um, August? I mean, was it in compliance, yes or no, in your professional opinion? I mean, that's what we're all just trying to resolve.
When, when we made the site visit and we found iron stakes and measured off the iron stakes on the property, there was encroachment, and that's where we started the process back in June, I believe, or June or July, um, of trying to move things in compliance. I've been in contact with, uh, Ms. Brownlow on the re- revegetation. I have not seen anything from an engineer for past that timeframe certifying that it, it meets. Uh, we have not received it, I mean.
It was sent to you and Matt both, and, and also there's, um, we received emails acknowledging that the trees on the neighbor's lot could come down, from Chris, he was aware of it, he was made aware of it, we have the, I have the documentation.
Well, I don't mean, because when we met here, the email from Tyler to the neighbor was that those three trees would be preserved, that's what we discussed, you and I in person, and so you've resolved it and you've actually planned it back, and if not, I think you made concession to the neighbor, if I'm not mistaken, and I could be wrong, but that's the information that we have on file.
I, I believe you are mistaken on this case, because we have the emails from the, from Mr. Seberg acknowledging that the, that Mr. Psychus also went up and talked to Chris about that before, I said, you need your own permit, go get a tree permit before you take down the tree, use our contractor to take down the trees.
I remember Mr. Psychus coming into the building and was really upset about it, but we, we, we'll do whatever you want us to do.
Yeah, I, I, and, and- But we got the CEO getting ready to come up, and I knew how this was going to affect that.
Let, let me make a-
It's also a conversation.
Let me make a-
This is a conversation that needs to stop right now.
Please, one moment, please, let me, let me make a suggestion here. Uh, I believe that legal made a determination on whether there's an NOV that's going to be issued or not going to be issued. I believe that legal is, answered the question that, um, or and Matt answered the question that there was not any perceived issue with a, uh, CO being issued. Those were the two things that were asked. We could go, we could sit in here until nine or 10 o'clock on what was done first, what came next, who said what, and all that kind of stuff, but was there, or is there going to be an NOV issued? I believe that question was answered. Unless I'm sorely mistaken, I believe the question was answered, that you're not going to have an issue getting a CO. So the rest of it can be played out in any other setting, feel free, but in the interest of time and in the interest of, out of respect to everybody in the room, everybody watching home, and all things applicable to Emerald Isle as a whole, uh, I believe those two questions have been answered. If they haven't been, please correct me if I'm wrong, but let's move forward, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. Uh, Commissioner Taylor, any final comments?
Yes, sir. First off, I'd like to thank Candace for all she's done and her team, uh, ten years, amazing work, uh, looking back, I've had, watched it for about seven years, and just amazing what she's done. Like to thank Attorney, um, Kirby, Mark, nice meeting you, and Tommy for, uh, taking the time to break down the UDO for us, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, using it, the town using it as a guide as we move forward and trying to, uh, fix, um, clean it up a little bit, so thank you for the time you spent on that. Like to recognize our newest county commissioner in the audience out there, congratulations, thank you for your, look, look forward to your leadership and, um, look forward to working with you as a town. Also, um, Manager Zap, congratulations on your appointment, it was, um, quite an honor, it's, um, that was very impressive to have the governor talk to you about that. Like to, a lot of thank yous going out there, I'd like to thank, uh, Commissioner Sanderson down there for mixing up, um, Brunswick stew today that we were, and paying with our private funds to make all the ingredients to come together for the town staff, it was, uh, quite a blessing for me to be out there and, uh, helping out with that, so that was, that was very nice, and thank you, ma'am, for that. And last, um, just want to say Merry Christmas, and, uh, don't forget, in my opinion, we live in the best town in the whole United States, and I travel all over the world, actually the world, I would say, so, um, hope you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I look forward to next year and some positive things happening, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wooton?
Um, let's see, first I'd like to thank Mark and Alicia, that was some awesome Brunswick stew, so very greatly appreciated, it was nice to get to catch up with a couple of folks. Congratulations, Mary Ann, welcome, uh, sorry, I hate that I missed your swearing in, but I had a bug I did not want to share with anybody, so, um, we'll have to go out and get some lunch or something to, to celebrate. Um, thank you, Kirby and Mark, Mark, nice meeting you, Kirby, you're, you're batting a thousand on your PowerPoint presentation, so don't stop now. Ah, well, I figured. And beyond that, um, Merry Christmas, everybody, appreciate everybody that came out and stuck with us, and, uh, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brownlow?
I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to next year, thank you.
Well said, sir, thanks. Commissioner Sawyer?
Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanderson?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, ma'am. Merry Christmas, love on your families. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night.